Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Members of Council, City Staff, and Members of the Public. This is Alex Hamilton, Fire Chief for the City of Oxnard. And for us today, we have the Public Safety Workshop for Council for the Fire Department. So I really quickly just wanted to start with a little bit about why we exist and how we are organised. You can see here just a very brief organisational chart that shows really there's sort of three branches, I guess, of the Fire Department. Fire Operations, which is, I guess, the classic things you think of a fire department with the lights and sirens, the emergency operations, so fire suppression. And then under that, obviously, we have some special operations. So that includes hazardous materials, urban search and rescue, ocean rescue, and then mutual aid response. And then obviously, we have the emergency medical side of our response. Then the next tile over there is Administrative and Support Services. And so that's sort of the business side of the Fire Department. So it includes the Fire Prevention Bureau, Business Services, and Training. And then last, Emergency Management Services. And I think everyone is familiar with our new emergency manager, or not so new emergency manager now, Candy Campbell, who's been doing a fantastic job in that role. And so just taking a quick look at the essential services that the Fire Department provides. So you can see there when it comes to suppression or emergency operations. So this is the things that happen out of our fire stations. So obviously, fire suppression first and foremost. But then we also provide basic life support. So everyone in the organisation is trained to the level of EMT. And then we have Advanced Life Support or Paramedic Services. And so our paramedics are essentially licensed by the state. And they can provide a high level of service to our residents. They can do more significant interventions for our residents to help improve patient outcomes. We have an Ocean Rescue Programme. And then we also have Urban Search and Rescue. And so while Urban Search and Rescue is really a fantastic insurance policy if we ever have sort of a large-scale earthquake or something like that. But the specialty training that those folks receive is also put to work in a lot of ways for technical rescue. So when we have vehicles over the side down by Magoo Rock, our units respond down there. Last year, we actually rescued somebody out that was stuck in a tunnel underground. So they do a range of different services in the Urban Search and Rescue. And under that also falls Swift Water Rescue. And our Swift Water Rescue Programme, unfortunately, when we have heavy rains, they've been put to work in rescuing folks out of fast-moving water as well. We have Hazardous Materials Response, which we need to have a robust hazardous materials programme because we have a lot of industry and some heavy industry in Oxnard. And so that's a very important part of what we do. And we have a fantastic collaboration with the rest of the operational area, particularly when it comes to hazardous materials response, so that we all help each other in those calls because they can be very technical and very, very volatile. So and then finally, Mutual Aid Response. And mutual aid has really in the last 10 years has become a much, much bigger part of what the Fire Department does in helping our neighbours, the region, and around the state in the large-scale, significant, primarily fires, but other events too. But you know, most recently, we saw that in January with the Palisades and Eaton Fires. We had strike teams that were fighting fire on the Palisades incident. And then we had crews from our Urban Search and Rescue Teams that worked both Eaton and the Palisades Fire on sadly doing recovery work and body recovery work from both of those incidents. So now on the Administrative or Business Services side, we have our Fire Prevention Bureau. And so they do work around new developments, doing plan checks on new developments, and then inspections. Fire investigations is another big part of what the Prevention Bureau does. And then we also have the Cooper Programme or Certified Unified Programme Agency, which really isn't a very good descriptor, but that's what the state terms our Cooper Division. So their primary responsibility is around hazardous material storage and disposal. So any of the businesses in town that store hazardous materials are regulated by our Cooper Agency. So and then as you can see there, we Fire Investigation and Inspection Services. And then when it comes to Business Services, again, that's sort of paying the bills, making sure payroll and HR functions are handled. And then also, we've been very successful over the years with grants. So managing those grants and ensuring those grants are handled appropriately. And then finally, the Emergency Management Branch of the Fire Department. And really, this is, while it falls under the Fire Department, Emergency Management is really a city resource. And so that is something that while it falls under the Fire Department, again, it is something for the entire city. And our emergency manager, Candy Campbell, has been doing a fantastic job. So a lot of that is maintaining our Emergency Operations Centre, ensuring that emergency operations plans and hazard mitigations, all of those things are kept up to date. But then also working on preparedness, not only for the city and continuity of operations within the city, but also for our residents and our businesses as well. There's a lot of training in that. And then really, in terms of preparedness, it is a lot to do with mitigating emergency, helping mitigate emergencies and coordinate that mitigation, but also recovering after after big events and big disasters. And then finally, under Emergency Management, a big piece of that is also the inter-agency coordination. So we coordinate very closely with the City of Waynimi, the City of Ventura, the other cities around us, and as well as the Ventura County Office of Emergency Services, which falls under the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. So next, a little bit how we serve the community. So we can see there that obviously, public safety is our sort of core responsibility, I guess, in terms of being able to respond quickly to emergencies and some of those special operations that I've already touched on. But there are also economic benefits for the Fire Department existing. And so helping maintain and hopefully increasing property values, trying to keep a lid on insurance by the way we respond, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we get deeper into this presentation. But also ensuring that businesses have, we have a robust response to businesses so we can keep emergencies as small as possible. So businesses hopefully can continue to run after they've had an emergency incident and helping them recover from that. We can also do a lot when it comes to providing a sense of security and hopefully helping increase those community bonds and sort of weaving together the community and helping a part of our community. And then the last one there, I wanted to touch on, community engagement and education. This has become a much bigger part of what we do, particularly as we've seen. We saw a really significant increase in losing residents in home fires without working smoke detectors. But it also gives us an opportunity to build trust in the community. It's a great recruitment tool for us, for residents that may be looking for a career in public safety. And so all very important. And then one of the things we are working towards is being more proactive when it comes to reducing risk in our communities. And hopefully, that means less emergency calls because we can mitigate emergencies before they even occur. So I touched on earlier around insurance rates and insurance costs. And while there's a lot around homeowner's insurance that is well out of our control, and certainly there's been some significant issues in the insurance industry and in the insurance market in California because of the big fires and things that we've had. But the reality is, one of the ways in which the Fire Department is measured in terms of our efficiency and our effectiveness is this insurance office Public Protection Classification, also known as an ISO rating. So you can see there, a Class One agency provides the best level of protection, with a Class 10 agency providing really no recognised protection. And so the ratings are really reflected in those four core areas. Well, three really are the scored components of your ISO rating. So you can see there, emergency communications, our communications are primarily provided by the Ventura County Fire Department in coordination with our own police dispatch. And then the Fire Department, obviously, and what we do is a big part of the score. And then our water supply is also obviously a big part of our score because we need water to put those fires out. And I have to take a moment to really compliment our Public Works Department and the fantastic job they do. We always score well when it comes to our water supply. There are places that we can approve without a doubt. But our Public Works Department has done really a phenomenal job in maintaining and improving the water supply. We saw our score improve from, in our most current rating from our previous rating. The other thing I wanted to touch on there, when you talk about the Fire Department's ISO score, it really comes down to staffing, training, response, and apparatus. And if you look at what our requests are when it comes to budget enhancements, they've really focused on those four areas. And this is one of the reasons for that. It does help with our ISO rating. So the City of Oxnard enjoys a Class Two rating. And so this is a phenomenal rating for us. I would love to see us get to a Class One rating. We need some further investments to get there. But the reality is, I think the City Council and the residents should be very pleased with a Class Two rating. So we do have, because the Class Two rating, as you can see there, applies to properties within 1,000 feet of a hydrant and within five miles of a station. So it really puts us in the top 3% to 5% of fire departments across the country. If you think about this, 30-odd thousand fire departments across the country, we are doing pretty well in that area. And so really, it shows that we provide exceptional capability and a very effective emergency response for our budget. And so when it comes to our ISO rating, again, the community and economic impact. One, our Class Two rating demonstrates that we provide excellent emergency protection. There are strong ISO scores. Also, it's hard to say that it reduces property insurance premiums. That was the original concept behind it. But I think with the insurance market where it is in California, I think the best that we're doing is keeping a lid on the increase of premiums or doing everything that we can in terms of having an impact on those premiums. Because again, there's a lot of things around the insurance market that are simply out of our control. And so the ISO rating also helps when it comes to economic development. Hopefully, it shows that it's an attractive place for businesses to invest in Oxnard because they will get excellent fire protection services. And then it also provides accountability and planning for us in terms of where we want to put our limited resources when it comes to response. And then it gives us the opportunity for continuous improvement. So as you can see there, our target would be for a Class One rating. So a little bit about where we have been the last few years. You can see there that we had, other than a sort of a dip during COVID times. And a lot of that, like we saw a lot, you know, a lot of significant medical calls during that time, obviously. We actually saw a drop overall in our call volume. And so that was a good thing, not that I ever want to go back to the dark days of COVID. But certainly, we did have a bit of a respite from the call volume. But otherwise, as you can see there, our call volume has been, it is slowly climbing. And it is, it is outpacing population growth. And so it is something that we're going to have to be more proactive about because adding additional resources is expensive. We will eventually need to add additional emergency response resources. But we are going to start having to look at ways to innovate how we handle certain calls potentially or developing a community paramedicine programme where we can actually proactively respond on people that use the 911 system more frequently. And so that's something we will be looking at to the future. And so I just wanted to touch on a little bit on this slide in terms of us maintaining 911 emergency response times. So one of the standards that exists for the fire service is, it's known as the Assembly Standard. So getting, so there's two different time requirements within that standard. It's set by the National Fire Protection Association, or NFPA. And so this standard essentially says that fire departments should shoot for having four personnel on scene within four minutes of leaving the station, 90% of the time. And then for a working structure fire, having 15 personnel on scene within eight minutes, 90% of the time. Now, you can see there, we do not hit those measures. We're not close to those measures. Now, that's in part, if we had four-person engine companies, that would significantly change the four-minute time standard for us. We recently added a fourth firefighter on Engine 84, which is out of the station on Vineyard. By doing that, it doubled the NFPA compliance in that area. So you can see it has a really meaningful impact when we talk about that. But this may be a conversation that Council would like to have around what do we want our standard to be? I think meeting this NFPA 1710 standard would be a heavy lift. It would take a significant investment. But perhaps we could look to set a standard of aiming to have four firefighters on scene within five minutes. Add an extra 60 seconds to those NFPA standards and use that as a measuring stick. Because as you can see on the slides there, we're not close to meeting that 90% standard where we're at. One of the things I wanted to touch on is a question around why four people in four minutes? Why 15 people in eight minutes? So the four people in four minutes really is built around a federal OSHA guideline, which says if we send people into a burning structure, we have to have two people on the outside ready to effect rescue. It's, in short, it's known as the two-in, two-out rule. So if we have people inside a building fighting fire, which is one of the most dangerous things that we do, we need to make sure that we have folks on the outside to rescue. So that's the basis behind that four people in four minutes standard. Now, 15 firefighters in eight minutes. So when we fight a structure fire, there is a lot going on simultaneously. And so the graphic that you see there, what it's trying to illustrate is all the things that are happening. It's, it may look like chaos from somebody watching what's happening on the scene. But the reality is, once we arrive on scene of a burning building, everybody knows what their role is and goes to work. And so the folks that are, the attack crew that you see there that are on the hose line, they would go inside the building. But at the same time, we need that ventilation team to get up on the roof. And what they do is they create a hole to get a lot of that smoke and toxic gas out of the building. That helps reduce the risk of a backdraft or a smoke explosion. It also improves the survivability of anyone that might be trapped. It gives our folks a better chance of finding folks that might be trapped, but also finding the seat of the fire. And so then we have the rescue team on the outside, which is known as the RIC team. They need to be set up. They're not just standing there waiting for somebody to be rescued. They're actively working. And so what they do is something we call softening the structure. So they're making sure that exits are open, there's not bars on windows. They're securing electrical, the utilities, so electrical, gas, and water. So they're doing all those things while you have an incident commander that's managing all of these different components. So that's why we have that 15 people in eight minutes standard is because there are so many things that need to happen very quickly in a coordinated fashion. So hopefully, that's a little bit of background for why that standard exists. Here just shows you where we're at. So when we talk about emergency response times, there is only one piece around this that we can control as the Fire Department. And that's how quickly we respond, how quickly we leave the station. Because once we're out of the station, it's sort of out of our hands. We can't drive in an unsafe manner. There is always going to be traffic and there's always going to be obstacles in our way. So the one thing that we can control is what we call our turnout time or the time it takes us to leave the station. So when it comes to a regular medical call, our goal is to leave the station within 60 seconds. On a structure fire call or a traffic collision call, the standard actually allows 20 extra seconds. So there's 80 seconds. And that 20 extra seconds is just recognising that we have to put on all our safety equipment before we leave the station. So that's why that standard exists. So you can see the green dotted line there is for medical calls for turnouts. And the red dotted line is the standard we want to be below when it comes to responding to fire calls. The yellow line across the bottom, that is our current turnout time. So you can see there, we are under that standard for both fire and EMS calls. It did climb a little bit in the last year. But our average turnout time is 56 seconds, which is just fantastic. And then you can see there, our overall response time, so as you can see there, it's measured in seconds. So we are just below five minutes as our average response times. Next, this is just another graphic illustrating what we saw earlier in terms of our compliance. So in 2021, our compliance was lower. And that may have been, this is a little bit of anomaly in the data. And so I can hypothesize a bit why our compliance dropped in 2021. We may have, it may have been taking additional time to get out of the station, putting on extra gear when it came to COVID. We certainly had, we had some significant staffing shortages. So that was part of that. But you can see there, other than 2021, our compliance has been fairly standard and obviously, a lot lower than the national standard. And then you can see here again, for that 15 personnel in eight minutes, again, in 2021, we really struggled with that number. But otherwise, we have been slowly increasing our compliance on the 15 personnel in eight minutes standard. And that, we have added emergency resources since 2021. And that has been, that's been the biggest driver of the improvement in those numbers. So one of the things I wanted to touch on is our emergency management. And this is one of the, one of our, one of the council priorities that we had, which was to create a modern disaster preparedness programme. And so you can see there, again, Candy Campbell's done a fantastic job in terms of modernising our digital presence. And so, and she continues to build on that work, really increasing our community engagement and outreach and doing a lot of work in the social media space, but also doing, really expanding our presence with in-person events. Candy's in the process of doing a complete rewrite of our emergency operations plan so that it lines up with both CalOES, FEMA, and new legislation, new standards. But also developing hazard-specific annexes, meaning in a tsunami, this is what we will do. We sort of have an annex or a checklist that we can pull out if we have an earthquake, if we have a major flooding event, all these different annexes will live in that emergency operations plan. And then one of the biggest things that we've been working on, that Candy's been working on, is making sure that all of the city staff are trained appropriately. And so we have, we have changes in staffing all the time. And so managing and making sure that everyone has all the required training they need is challenging. And so we've been working on developing a three-year training cycle so that it's constantly, it's on a loop. And so as new people come in, certainly if they're in key positions as a part of the Emergency Operations Centre, they will be receiving training right away. But all city staff are also, they have an auxiliary role as a disaster service worker. So all city staff now, as a part of their new employee orientation, get some specific disaster service worker awareness training. And so we've built a virtual platform to be able to do that. Again, getting back our other council priorities, for the council priorities that are just concluding was maintaining emergency response times and restoring and increasing paramedic squads. And so you can see here, our response time for our ALS programme, so our paramedics getting on scene, has improved significantly from 2021 to 2024. That was in part by the addition of a second paramedic squad. And so, and our goal in the city is to have our paramedics on scene within under five minutes. It's such an important thing because so much, there is so much research out there that shows that if we can do those paramedic interventions early and as early as possible, it improves patient outcomes, it reduces costs on the healthcare system, and it reduces the amount of time that folks have to stay in hospital. So it's such a key component of our EMS programme. And then one of the things I just wanted to touch on is we continue to strive to really be at the cutting edge in terms of the health and safety of our personnel. And we've been working really hard on that. And so in the last couple of years, we have added two emotional support canines. And so when those handlers are working, those canines are actually living at the station with the handler. We have two culturally competent clinicians that are on contract, that are available to help our staff and really support our staff, particularly after traumatic events and those kinds of things. And then the other thing that I've, I've been really enjoying, just as the intellectual nerd in me, I guess, has been enjoying is, we're currently participating in three different research studies. So we're looking at the effects of neurofeedback and PTSD. And this is not to suggest that neurofeedback is a treatment for PTSD, but more it helps reduce the severity of the symptoms for PTSD. And so that's a research study that's going on right now. Another thing that we've been working on, two other studies we've been working on with the University of Arizona. One of them is the PFAS levels, they're those forever chemicals. Research has shown that firefighters have a much higher proportion of PFAS in their bloodstream, likely from exposures from the job. There's a range of different ways that folks have been exposed. But we're part of a research study right now on seeing how we can reduce those PFAS levels. And then last, we're also part of a long-term firefighter cancer research study. And so really, this is, this is tracking firefighters' biomarkers over the course of their career. So this is going to be a long-term study. That study is, has approximately 30,000 firefighters in that study from across the United States. And we're lucky enough to be participants in that. And so, you know, our goal and all of the firefighters from Oxnard that are participating in that study, really, none of us obviously want to get cancer or, you know, I think all of us that are involved in this study, if nothing else, are trying to leave the fire service in a better place than when we found it. And if we can better understand how firefighters are getting cancer and why they're getting cancer, we can, we can lead, it will lead to better interventions. Right now, the statistics tell us that firefighters are about 10% more likely than the general population to get cancer and 15% more likely to die from cancer than the general population. So it's, it's something that we're very focused on and something that we're trying to address as emerging research allows. And so while I've already touched on the council priorities that were specific to public safety, I thought it was worth noting that We also provide indirect support for other council priorities. And so one of those would be the quality of life, um, council priority. And so uh we participate in the, the homeless task force that, that brings together a range of, of different city departments. To help address the, the impacts of homelessness. Um, and so one of the things that we've done, we're, we're just starting on a buprenorphine. Uh, pilot program, and essentially this is uh for, for residents with substance abuse issues. Um, that are interested in um joining the buprenorphine program. It's, it, buprenorphine is a way to help treat folks with substance abuse issues. It um helps reduce the cravings, it helps reduce the withdrawal symptoms. And, and in other places that have had these um buprenorphine programs. Um, they've, they've had about a thirty percent retention rate for folks with substance abuse issues, which is actually a, a pretty high number. Um, also with the hazard uh elimination and reduction operation. And so that's a, a collaboration between code enforcement, code enforcement, fire and the police department. Um, to reduce the number of unpermitted food vendors, um, and the public safety hazards that they, they present to us. Um, and then last, public outreach and education. Um, you know, since twenty twenty-one, we've installed over seven thousand smoke alarms. Uh, in homes in our, in our city, and we're continuing to do that. Um, and our public education specialist, uh, Loopy Melko is doing a phenomenal job in that arena. Um, and so we're, we're excited that we'll be able to provide, provide for a high level of safety for our residents. But unfortunately, the reality is, um, still around three quarters of the residential home fires that we respond to today. Do not have a working smoke alarm. Um, other areas where we provide ins- indirect support for council priorities. Uh, investing in staff training and development. Um, so we have longstanding uh partnership with the Oxnard College Fire Technology Program. Um, we've been building um better and better collaboration with the Oxnard Unified School District. Um, as I think, um, the council is aware, we have our EMS core program for underserved young adults. As a workforce development program that's been fantastic. And then the Oxnard Fire Explorer Program, um. Excuse me, has been uh an incredible uh program for, for Oxnard youth. And it's been a, a fantastic recruitment tool uh for the fire department as well. Um, uh, one of the things we were challenged uh by when it came to um the council priorities was. A modest and incremental implement, implementation of a lifeguard program. This uh, this was not something we were able to stand up, um, um, in the last round of council priorities, so. Uh, finding funding for the new program was difficult to identify. Um, we had some staffing challenge, well, there were staffing challenges particularly coming out of COVID. Inadequately staffing the surrounding lifeguard programs that the, the, um, the county has and uh the state and the city of Port Wannimi. Um, and just um for everyone's education, the approximate cost to, to stand up a program would be about one point five million dollars. With an ongoing cost of approximately eight hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, this is something that, that I, I think as, as council looks to set new priorities, it is certainly something to consider. And that's why I wanted to list those costs there. So we're talking about challenges over the next few years, um, you know, we, um. We would um love uh continued support on um ma- making sure that we maintain our capel apparatus. They're the, the, the big and the expensive fire engines and ladder trucks. Council has given us fantastic support over the last five years to um really update our, our vehicle fleet. And it was sorely needed, and we are slowly working towards uh rebuilding our fire stations. As I know, we have issues across the city when it comes to aging infrastructure and deferred maintenance. Uh, our fire stations um have been no different. Um, and so that's an area that um we could use continued support on. Um, you know, when it comes to emergency response. We, um, we are going to be challenged and more and more challenged into the future. Um, as I mentioned, our call volume is outstripping. Um, uh, our, our residential growth. And so the call volume is rising faster than, than we're gaining residents. Um, and so that's, that's really putting a, a lot of strain on our workforce. Um, and how many calls they're responding to. So looking at um adding additional uh emergency response resources. Is gonna be something we, we're gonna need to look to and plan for, for the future. Um, I'd like to see uh us continue to invest in our, in our ALS program. And be able to provide um additional um uh EMS service. And certainly, um, I'm looking forward to uh the county uh doing a, a new um RFP for um ground ambulance transport services. And hopefully that will, will change um the system in, in a way that, that benefits our residents. Cause the current system um is, has become antiquated and needs changing. And then continuing to uh maintain our special operations programs. Uh, one of the challenges we're gonna be faced by is um the dwindling support from the federal government. Uh, when it comes, particularly when it comes to training. Um, the fire department has sort of become the Swiss Army knife for, for nine one one responses. If, if there isn't a criminal element, um, then it, then it gets kicked over to the fire service. And so whether that is one of those special operations, um, you know, the fire service. We, we essentially respond to, to all, all call types that our residents have. Um, and so maintaining proficiency in, in the wide variety of things that we need to be experts in is challenging. Um, and that coupled with uh reduced support from the federal government and training. The federal government, um, on average, has probably provided um the fire department through a number of different grant mechanisms. Somewhere between five and six hundred thousand dollars a year in, in training. Um, and, and we're seeing that quickly disappear. Um, technology is another area where we, we are really behind the times. Um, we've been working closely with our IT department and certainly they. Um, they are throwing as much resources as they can to bear um to these issues. But there are some really exciting technologies out there that will allow us to make. If nothing else, make better data-driven decisions. And I think that's the, the single uh biggest um thing that we need right now. Is better analytical tools so that we can better um leverage our resources, because our least resources are limited. Um, uh, in the next three years, certainly continuing to support our emergency management and disaster preparedness programs. Um, that's gonna be a, a key part of what we do in the next few years. And then when it comes to our prevention bureau, um, we've been doing a lot of work in rebuilding our prevention, um, department, prevention bureau, excuse me, since I've been fire chief. Um, but looking at where we can become cost neutral, um, where we're allowed under state law. Um, so, um, right now, we, we're not um charging as much as we could. Um, to cover the costs of, of some of the services that prevention provides. I'm also sensitive to the fact that obviously that cost has to be borne by, by the business or the residents. So we need to be strategic in how that's done, but, but ultimately we need to try and get cost neutral in areas where we can. Um, and, and that, that will hopefully allow us to um better invest in expanding our efforts in public education and community outreach. Cause that will in turn reduce the risk that the community is facing. Um, I just wanted to touch on very briefly in the longer term. Um, we, we do have some significant challenges coming at us. You know, continuing to upgrade and rebuild uh our fire stations, um, is, is something for the longer term. Uh, we are gonna need a new training location to replace the current location at the old Oxnard High School. Uh, we are gonna need to continue to um uh invest in technologies. Um, and then uh looking at, um. Uh, looking at it, um, how we can better plan, longer-term planning. And, you know, the um allocation of resources. Again, we have very limited resources, so um how can we, how can we best utilize those resources? And then, um, there is uh ever-increasing cost pressures on us and the equipment that, and, and the communications and things that we use. And so, um, how we can, how we can handle those costs um and plan for those costs into the future. Um, and that, that would go on long past, um, you know, the three-year time horizon that we're looking at currently. So as we come to a close on this presentation, um, I just wanted to reaffirm our commitment to Oxnard. That um we are here to protect life, property and the environment. Um, we are here to help build um community resilience and, and make our community more resilient. Um, we are thoroughly enjoying the challenge of developing a strong, more diverse public safety workforce. Um, and then uh looking at preparing for tomorrow's challenges today. Um, one of the biggest challenges that's coming at us uh fast is uh energy storage systems. And that's, that's something that we are, we are working both in the city, but also with the county and our surrounding agencies. As how we manage uh energy storage systems as they come online in the future. I think they're, they, they are a part of our reality. However, they are creating new risks for us that didn't exist before, and we need to be able to meet those challenges head-on. And um at that, I, I, before I close, I would just like to uh pass on my gratitude. Uh, to Cecilia Perez in the city's communications team for the uh amazing job she did. In, in making our PowerPoint look so professional, I just wanted to uh give a, a public thank you and shout out to Cecilia. And with that, I'd be open to any ki- questions that um uh council or public might have. Thank you.